Oh my goodness. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We begin each of our meetings with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. This evening, Vice Mayor Fennell will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and Councilman Alexander will offer our invocation. If you would stand with me, please.
In every heart pray. Turn grace God once again. We come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day that thou has created. We thank you for the city of Gallatin and all that it stands for. I pray, oh God, that thou would be in the midst of this meeting. Let everything we say and do be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, in every heart said, "Amen."
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell. Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and everyone is here. Before you, you have the minutes from April five, twenty twenty-two, City Council meeting. Motion to approve. Who seconded that?
I did.
You did. Councilman Alexander seconded it. Yes, ma'am?
I have one little correction. There was one minor error on page eight where it's Rose Mott. Mott is misspelled.
Is it?
Okay. Got two Ms.
Two, it's, I'm not, okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's got two Ms. She was close, had two words. And Ms. George, what you suggested to me, that would actually be appropriate for next week's meeting.
Yes, thank you. I would like to have placed in the minutes the amount of times that we were interrupted so that that would be part of our minutes.
In the public comment, there were multiple interruptions. Think that will suffice. Thank you. So with those two, one correction, one addition. Is everyone satisfied with that? Call those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected and amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, they are approved unanimously. Next is our public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone can come forward and address any item that is on the evening's agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can come forward and speak on anything that's not on the agenda. Regardless, you have five minutes to do either, and we ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address as well, please. So, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. And now seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Moving now to mayor's comments. I have just a few events I want to make sure that you're aware of. The first is on the twenty-first. I guess that would be Thursday of this week, and that's the Sumner County Youth Job and Opportunity Fair. This is primarily for seasonal jobs, starting in the late spring and early summer. It's at the American Job Center from three until six P. M. I mentioned before, but I'll remind you that Tuck Everlasting will be performed at Welch College, both on the twenty-first and twenty-second. Also, on the twenty-second, Market in the Park at Triple Creek Park starts. That's on that day from four till eight, and then on Saturday from nine until four. The Wilrow is having their second annual truck show happening out at their place on Saturday. Their Drug Takeback Day is happening at places all around Sumner County. Tuck Everlasting is also being performed on that day. And then the next week, on the twenty-eighth, we have the Classic Cars Cruisin' at the Gallatin Civic Center, the Gallatin Daycare Spaghetti Supper and Auction. On the thirtieth, we have Nick Tuttle's birthday, the Pedal for Paws benefiting the Sumner Spain and Nutrileiance, and Square Fest happens on the last Saturday in April, and that goes from ten until five that day. So that's going to conclude my comments, but I do have a proclamation to present. And so I'm going to ask Sonya Swett Manford and the folks from CASA to join me at the podium, please. Guys, y'all can come over here and stand here because the camera's over there. Don't want to show them your back. Sonya, I'm going to ask you to introduce everybody, if you like.
So, thank you. With me today, I have Amy Cook, who is our program director, Laura Mueller, who is our court liaison, and then two board members, Larry Woz and Rachel Crowder, who are our chair and vice chair.
And if you would, speak just a little bit about what CASA does.
So, this year's really special to us. It is our thirtieth anniversary. CASA has been serving children here in Sumner County since nineteen ninety-two. And in that time, we've served over four thousand children who've been part of juvenile court in cases where there are allegations of abuse and neglect. We have over thirty-five volunteers who give their time monthly to make sure that the children that we serve have a voice in court.
Lovely. And a lot of that is said in this proclamation I'm getting ready to read. I want to say that, you know, being the niece of the former juvenile judge, that I have a real, I think, I think most of this community has a real appreciation for CASA, certainly. But I know a lot about what you guys do and the difference that you make in children's lives, but also in families' lives. And so it's not an easy job, and I have so much respect and admiration for you all and appreciate those of you serving in the board capacity as well. You have a real heart for serving people who have some really intense and special needs. So, thank you for doing that. I'm going to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas Sumner County Court-appointed Special Advocates CASA works to provide a voice for the best interests of children before the juvenile court in petitions involving abuse and neglect; and whereas Sumner County CASA accepted its first case from the juvenile court on April nineteen ninety-two and has served more than four thousand children since then; and whereas research has shown that when a CASA is appointed, outcomes are strengthened for both children and families, more needed services are ordered, and children are less likely to re-enter the child welfare system; and whereas Sumner County CASA volunteers are dedicated to advocating for the best interests of the children that they serve so that every child who has experienced abuse or neglect can be, have a safe, can be safe, have a permanent home, and the opportunity to thrive; and whereas Sumner County CASA celebrates thirty years of providing advocacy for children by providing the juvenile court with comprehensive and objective information that allows the court to make the most well-informed decisions to help the children before the court to reach permanency. Now, therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, hereby recognize Sumner County CASA's thirtieth anniversary and urge all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of those individuals involved in the Sumner County CASA program and to thank them for all of the support and dedication they have provided to the children they have served." So, congratulations. Have a huddle in there. All right. We will move on now to the regular agenda. And the first item tonight on the agenda is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-twelve, and Councilman Alexander is recognized for it.
Thank you, ma'am. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, residing in fourteen point six to seven plus or minus acres from the R-ten median density residential district from R-eight PRD median residential plan residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for the Holland property, located west of Center Street and north of Demoff Street, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for servability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton. Opening the floor for any discussion.
Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Bill? Is this development, is it approved?
Microphone.
Bill McCord, City Planner.
Is this development with hardy board versus siding?
It'll have some brick on it, but not seventy percent brick or stone.
Okay, but will the, it won't be siding. It'll be hardy board in the places where siding, or it will have siding also.
See what the final condition was there. Okay, what it say is here is condition number seven. All houses shall contain a minimum of forty percent brick or stone facade to the front of the house and provide brick and stone materials from the foundation to the grade of the homes. So, essentially, on the sides of the house, in the back of the house.
I understand.
Bottom.
I would ask you earlier, but I just had a text on it. But thank you, Bill.
Anyone else? Okay, this is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-twelve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. It is passed unanimously. Item number two is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-fifteen. Councilman Hayes, you're recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving and amending preliminary master development plan for Lowe's and a preliminary master development plan for Double Star Hotel, a four-story, seventy-one thousand eight hundred seventy-six square-foot hotel on a three-point-seven-six acre lot located south of Nashville Pike and east of Brown's Lane, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions?
I still have a problem with the parking.
The parking?
And the traffic going in and out.
I would say, I mean, just thinking versus a retail, like, convenience store or something, that there's probably going to be less traffic related to a hotel than there would be to something like that.
There's a lot going on in that parking lot.
I can't hear, I'm sorry. I had a cold.
I said, I, there's a lot going on in that parking lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Won't the hotel traffic go around the back part of the park? I mean, maybe the front part. We're away from Lowe's, at least, and bypass all of that.
Yeah, I think Lowe's primarily uses the Nashville Pike access, and this will not.
Just maypeing in.
Absolutely okay. Anyone else? Okay, this is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-fifteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Cas is six to one. Moving on to item number three, which is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-sixteen. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating thirty-two thousand one hundred fifty dollars from various budget lines for a Gallatin Economic Development Agency vehicle purchase. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-three-dash-sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item four is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-four-dash-eighteen. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating six hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars from donations from businesses to Gateway Drive Extension Construction, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Do want to reiterate, because this question, I guess, came up a week or so ago, this is money from the company to pay the city for the road that is serving the company. It's not various businesses, it's donations from that business. Any other, any questions or comments about that? Okay, this is Second Reading on Ordinance oh-two-two-zero-four-dash-eighteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item five is Resolution R-two-two-zero-three-dash-thirty. Councilman Hayes.
This is Resolution of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services upon the annexation of point seven zero mile-long segment of Big Station Camp Boulevard right-of-way, extending from Vietnam Veterans Boulevard to south of Lakeland Drive, comprising approximately thirteen point six acres and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion on this? It's Resolution R-two-two-zero-three-dash-thirty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item six is Resolution R-two-two-zero-three-dash-thirty-one. Councilman Hayes.
This is Resolution of the City of Gallatin, annexing a point seven zero mile-long segment of Big Station Camp Boulevard right-of-way, extending from south Vietnam Veterans Boulevard to south of the intersection of Lakeland Drive and Big Station Camp Boulevard, comprising approximately thirteen point six acres, authorizing the annexed right-of-way to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, authorizing the assignment of annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions, providing for servability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
By Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman, Vice Mayor Fennell? Okay. All right, any questions on this? This is Resolution R-two-two-zero-three-dash-thirty-one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number seven is Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-thirty-seven. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution temporarily adjusting certain rates of pay, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any questions, any discussion on this? This is Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-thirty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item eight is Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-thirty-eight. Councilwoman George, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution reappointing Richie Hawville as board member of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency Board. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-thirty-eight passes unanimously. And item number nine is Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-forty-three. Vice Mayor Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. This is a resolution amending Gallatin personal rules and regulations relating to sickly pull. Rule sixteen, section sixteen through three. Motion to approve.
A motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Overton. This is Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-forty-three. It's actually section sixteen dash three U. Any questions or discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution R-two-two-zero-four-dash-forty-three is passed unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I do have two items to bring before you. One is that I have heard from the organizer of our annual Fourth of July event that's done the festival the last couple of years, and they are no longer able to do that. And certainly, I understand it, it's quite an undertaking. And so my question to this council is how do you wish to proceed? I think in twenty twenty, we just did the fireworks because that was, you know, the heavy COVID year, and we didn't want to encourage any gatherings or what have you. So, we can certainly do that again. Another thought that I had is that we could just, you know, maybe allow the parks to book, like, food trucks for that event and maybe rent the, you know, ask for a percentage of their profits or pay a certain amount to participate and let it not be a, an organized festival, but more of a food truck rally because that's something we put in our ordinance. So, those are my two thoughts. We don't have to make a determination tonight. I wanted you to be aware of the status and to see if you guys had any ideas that you wanted to offer or had any thoughts on how we might move forward. I've just learned this. I haven't even asked Mr. Brown if he thinks that might be a good idea or what have you, but...
I like that idea of the food trucks. I think we, we're three months away, so it'd be hard for any organization to volunteer and then get it all sorted out.
It's just so much work with not a great return or has not had. I believe there's the potential for a great return, but the number of volunteers that it takes to host something like that is, it is, is quite difficult. As someone who's organized it in the past, you know, rounding up those volunteers and spending that long hot day in July, dealing with, you know, parking and, or, you know, organizing and all the fun stuff that comes with the festival, it's, it's difficult. So, I understand why it's hard to get someone in.
Maybe the new nonprofit for the Miracle Park might want to do it. So, I guess we just need to ask them and see. They may want to do something like that, so. Thing work with David and Seaver.
And I thought, you know, the food truck thing might be an easy thing that wouldn't take a lot of staff or volunteers, but, you know, people can...
What about fireworks?
Well, the fireworks were already contracted to do, so they would still happen, and we would still have the city workforce support for that part of the program as far as, you know, parking in and out, that kind of thing, but...
I love the food truck idea. I think that's a great one.
Might be that the fire department still wants to come out and do their foam mountain thing. I think that's the most popular thing that happens every year, so. So, that's kind of the latest on that. The other thing that I have for you is on April thirtieth, we discussed this earlier, and on October first are the two downtown festivals this month and is going to be the Square Fest and then the Main Street Festival open, happens in the fall. And historic downtown Gallatin is requesting road closures starting at six A. M. and ending at six P. M. And the streets are Main Street from College to Locust, the Public Square from Main Street to Water Street, and Water Street from Smith Street to Broadway. So, this can...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion on this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved. I will say, this year is going to be interesting because we're going to have some parking challenges. So, everybody needs to work together, and any business or church that's willing to help accommodate it would greatly be appreciated by both the downtown Gallatin organization and the city. Okay, any other business coming from this council? Seeing none, okay. Well, we will move on now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. Again, this is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and speak to any item that's not on this evening's agenda. So, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
My name is Joe DeBord, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise tonight for a couple of three reasons. Number one, as I noted with a, with a interest, the vote of the vote of Ms. George with regard to the project out there at Lowe's. Uh, one of the big stinks that we have in our community is we haven't done a damn thing, excuse my French, about widening any of these streets in our city. The first thing, other than the wonderful addition of Albert Gallatin Boulevard all the way to the one oh nine, nothing else has been done, hadn't been touched. I will back you on one issue. We have been caught with a bad situation with regard to finances because of the COVID. We've also been nailed with regard to, we don't have enough staff to do the job. But it's time for, for this community to look at that issue front and center. This is not your fault. I'm not hanging it on you folks in the council as of right now because of the fact that somebody down the road did not do their job in making sure that streets were widened as needed in the past. But now, guess what? You've got a backlog a mile long that needs to be something done about throughout our community. And as I've spoke before, in a lot of, a lot of our, our sections of our community, especially in my neighborhood, you have the right-of-way. It's already there. All you have to do is use it. The second part is, in some parts of our community, we need to have the authorization to be go on private property in order to complete the job. That is a sticker right now. It takes time to do that, get people's signatures to get that done. I've been right in the middle of it. I know what I'm talking about. So, that's your challenge, folks. Because now we can't say, we can't build where we need to build because I think Ms. Ms. George is correct in one respect, but at the same time, I think we'd be all right out there. But not everywhere. So, I've said my piece with regard to that. Now, number two. According to what I've heard in the last couple of days, we're going to have a special activity day on September the seventeenth of this coming fall. And that has to do with the grand fondue, if you want to call it. And we'll get Ms. Hayes to be out there in front of the crowd on that deal, which would be nice. And I understand Daddy's got to come and see you, mayor. I understand he's got to come see you about that.
He in charge of road closures?
Yeah, he's in charge of road closures. So, he know the rest of the story. And that's, that's, that's why the close family resemblance is there, you see. You understand how that works. And, and we are planning to have a two-night pool, tractor pool. And this is going to be in conjunction with KTPA, Kentucky Tractor Pools Association, and it's going to be the final, the final pool of the year for them. They want to have a big deal, and we want to put on a show out there for folks in the neighborhood. And that way, we'll have, possibly have some people visit our neighborhood, and that's what we're here for. So, we can utilize our facility and, and do, do Gallatin proud, just like what, what I enjoy about this community, even you, Sean. So, I thank you very much.
Got the date on that?
That's the seventeenth of September, and the, the two-day pool will be sixteenth and seventeenth. That's being set up by Mr. Larry with paperwork. So, put that in pipe. There's going to be other things, too. I think that same day that they have, the sheriffs has their special deal out there.
Any...
It's going to be a big day, just like we've had in the past. Thank you, folks.
Good evening, all Pascal Germans, thirteen thirty-five Long Golepah. Good evening, mayor, council. First, I would like to take some of my, at least one of my minute to get a minute of silence to acknowledge the passing of County Commissioner Mo Taylor, who passed unfortunately a couple of weeks ago. So, appreciate if you can get with me on that. Thank you, all. Mo was, somebody was great that everybody loved, and that's a big loss for everybody in the community. Anyway, another thing, should be a quick fix, that would be possible for IT to do something, I don't know if you remember, during COVID time, we had the PDF of the meetings on the front page, on the top front page of the city website, and I got, you know, people asking me where to find it, people who are not used to, to go and navigate on the website, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to find, you have to click plenty of stuff and go to plenty of pages, so, I suppose that was done before, that should be an easy fix. If we could have it on a front page, that would make a lot of people's life a lot easier, so, that's pretty all for tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for mentioning Commissioner Taylor. I know that his counsel and his community is keeping he and his family in our thoughts and prayers.
Michael Clark, 923 South Westland Avenue here in Gallatin, Tennessee. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor and Councilwoman Love and Councilman John D. Alexander and Eileen George for the support of our Seven Last Words at Flames of Fire Institution of Church God in Christ where I lead. I'm not up, just up here just to say thank you, but I'm up here because, for years, I've been attending these meetings, and I've heard more criticisms against these bodies than I've heard people encouraging the people that serve us. Not here to take a text, but I hope and wish that our community, with all the evil that's going on around the world, will be more kind to one another. You all are not perfect, we're not perfect also, either. I've seen other mayors here, and these plans have been going on in our city for years, and then people come at the tail end and start trying to tell you all what to do, as if you all have not been planning over the years before some of us have moved here. God bless you all, and thank you.
God bless you, sir, and thank you. And I enjoyed the service, I'm sorry I couldn't stay for the whole thing. I did get to see Councilman Alexander, or I guess in that capacity, Pastor Alexander got to see you in action.
Y'all didn't get to hear me sing, though, did you? You left.
I did not, I did not.
Move on, Mayor, move on.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening, you can come forward at this time.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping John Alexander will sing tonight, now that I hear about it.
Due to the length of time that we have, we're going to have to alleviate that at this point.
I want to declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will say good night with what Bishop Clark said, be kind, everyone. Have a good night, and thank you all.